Welcome to the planning board meeting of May 20th, 21st, 2024. Minutes of the last meeting.
Motion to accept minutes as prepared, as distributed.
I'll second.
Moved in second that we approved the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that was the four. We're going to jump right over to the parks department. Get them in and out. Over the changes that were discussed last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, it's Michael Moonin with CHA for the town of Milford Parks Department. So, in revising the plans, from the picnic area to the north of the site, we moved that over to create some more green space over to the west side, and we reduced the pathway size to six feet wide. The pathway from Walnut Street in, we reduced that from 10 feet wide to eight feet wide, the same width as most of the other pathways in the park. We relocated the memorial for the basketball court over to the new basketball courts. And then we revised the walkways in front of the bathrooms. That didn't get on the main drawing set, but I passed out a revision for that. And then we added a picnic table down by the playground also, to provide that at the playground area and basketball court area. So those are all the changes for the Town Park project. It seems pretty much. Did I miss any?
We've done everything that we have.
Yeah, I think based on what we had said at the last meeting, I mean, I guess nobody was totally in favor for everything that was there, but at the end of the day, I think we gave them a, if you make these changes, these are what would be comfortable moving. So I don't have any other issue.
Yes, thank you. First, I apologize for being a few minutes late for the meeting. I work with the gentleman that wrote the grant for this, I'm sorry, we're in Town.
Yes.
I work with the gentleman that wrote the grant for this park improvement, Mitra City. And he suggested that we make sure that whatever changes have been made are not such that they would require an amendment to the grant, that we would not be required to amend the grant in any way with the state or federal government.
Yeah, so I've been working with Zach on that to make sure that doesn't happen. So when Mitch moved out, I sort of took over his role, and I've been working with Zach, sort of recording everything as we go.
Okay.
Making sure the funding is being used for the CBDG as it should be. And then, at this point, there's no amendments. The one that may need to come up is the bathrooms, because originally it was for a modular, and right now, we're looking at restoration.
Okay.
So that's the one I will have to, you know, look through it once we get to that point, once we get all the pricing down, and see how much it comes compared to what they priced it at originally.
Okay. And just to jump ahead a little bit, I'll pose the same question on the other park as well, because that's similarly funded by the, excuse me, CDBG program.
Right, so that isn't part of the CDBG.
Oh, okay.
That's ARPA funds.
Okay.
So we went to the select board for the extra ARPA funds.
Yeah.
So that would be between ARPA funds and town appropriated money.
Okay.
So.
The question's not applicable for the other park?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe?
Should be ready.
Chris?
No, thank you for making those updates. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Sounds like a motion.
It's a pleasure of the board. Motion, we approve the plan for Town Park improvements as submitted.
I will second.
Moved in second, we approve the site plan, amended site plan for the Town Park. Any further discussion? There are none. Those? Aye. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Three in favor, two opposed.
Who's on first? I was in favor.
Joe and I. Joe, where is it?
Yes, here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to interject, I know it's not my meeting, but is this a public hearing?
No.
It's not a public hearing. It was.
Okay, that's okay. No questions.
Oh, geez. God, I didn't want to do it.
Okay. Pearl Street.
Okay, again, Mike Moonin for the Town of Milford Parks Department. So this one had fewer revisions. As requested, we revised the drainage to add an open swale off the edge of the driveway and have the drainage water from that side of the park go into the existing catch basin. And then we added conduit and handholds for future, for potential future lighting at the courts. And then we added the four bollards that were requested at the end of the parking lot.
Questions from the board?
Do you want to look at the grading for the drainage?
It's, I mean.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, it's just.
Yeah. I think it'll at least allow us, the way it's graded, it'll at least allow us to do something more in the future, whereas before, it would, you know, I don't know how much.
Any other questions? It's a pleasure of the board.
I'm of approval of the Pearl Street Park Improvement Plan.
Second. Moved in second to approve the Pearl Street Park Improvement Plan. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that was the five.
Should do the 81P real quick.
All right. I'll say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Babe, you got your three non-vote. No problem. Babe, do you want to vote on the 81P, and then you sign it after the presentation?
An 81P?
Yeah, this is Garreal, the, at 108 East Main, informants through their approval process, both the ZBA and the planning board, was to combine the two lots. They filed an 81P plan to do that. They've identified the internal property line that's being eliminated with this combination of lots.
Any questions by the board? It's a pleasure of the board.
Make a motion, we sign the 81P, approve of signing 81Ps.
Second.
Moved in second, we signed the 81P. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that was the five.
You're on. That wasn't bad.
No, it was very good. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Josh Fiala, Principal Planner at MAPC. Happy to be with you about the comprehensive plan again tonight. Adjust with the adjustments to the agenda. We can go a full three or four hours with you all now. So, no, we'll keep it brief, but we do.
You can go. Can we review his contract?
I'm joined by two of my colleagues, who I'll introduce themselves. May I start with Courtney?
Good evening. Courtney Lewis, Senior Planner at MAPC.
Well, everyone, Adi Nocar, Senior Transportation Planner at MAPC.
All right, so we have a few things that we wanted to just cover with the committee this evening. Mostly, we have more information than we're going to cover verbally, but did just want to share with you, and you can take a look at it. You have a thick printout in the packet, and enjoy that information outside of this meeting. But we wanted to touch a few items with you, the recap of town meeting, which was last night, and we hear that you had a bit of a late night, so we will try to respect that tonight. Also wanted to touch on the community meeting, which was held last week on Monday, a very successful event from our perspective, and just want to touch on what happened at that. Many of you joined us, so we're able to see that in person. And then also want to promote the community survey, which is active presently, and we want to get as much traction on that as possible with your help. And then the introduction, the change in agenda, I guess, introduction today, which will be following pretty much through the course of this process, is taking one of the topics of the comprehensive plan and doing a bit of a deep dive with you all as a committee, sort of one per meeting amongst the other agenda items. So tonight, we have transportation, that's why Adi's joining us. We won't, you know, we'll also try to do that briefly, but wanted to give a chance to talk about a specific topic with you all and present some information on that. And we'll follow that model. Next meeting, we'll be talking about economic development in downtown. The following meeting, we'll be talking about another topic, and so on, over the course of our meetings together. All right, so that, I think we need to actually update our list a little bit. Martha, are you a new member?
Yes. I think this is my third meeting.
Just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss something, so glad to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys. Thanks for your work.
Yes, thank you. We'll update our list accordingly. And our team is a big one. You saw many of our team members actually out last week. We are all happy to be here and are engaging with the community in a variety of different ways. And at the occasions like community meetings, you'll see many of our faces, but we all are working together on that. We've talked about the timeline in detail. We have the visioning forum, which is the first of a major set of events, but we will be doing some follow-up events, including the community survey, to continue to get that outreach before the summer starts in earnest. And then as we collect that outreach, we'll be focusing on a vision and a vision statement as our primary objective. And then as we shift from the summer to the fall, we'll be moving into goals as well. This is just a quick diagram we shared at the community meeting about the plan organization and how all these different components fit together, with the vision statement being at the center of that content, and then other more detailed information with each of the topics flowing out from that center point. We weren't at town meeting, but wanted to hear from you all, just, I know that there was a summary read at town meeting about the comprehensive plan. We had a print of that report, which was sent to town meeting members, hopefully to help socialize the process and get people aware of it. Anything happen? I don't think there was discussion.
No, it was just a committee report, so there was no discussion.
It's under Article 1. That is the only way to get it in there.
We're glad that happened. Thank you for taking that on and communicating that to the town meeting members as well. In terms of the community meeting, we had an agenda which was focused on providing a summary of and context for the comprehensive plan, but then the session, as you all recall who were there, was really focused around small group discussion and invited those who were in attendance to provide us feedback on what they see as challenges and opportunities in the town and where they'd like to see the town be heading for the next 10 years or so. We had a good crowd, probably in the neighborhood of between 50 and 60. You can see that on those images on the screen, arranged around tables for those small group discussions. And we also had a nice setup in the upper hall with the large screen as well over the stage for that initial presentation. So I won't go through these item by item, but we do have digitized on these slides what you have in your packets, all of the comments that we received on the post-it notes and the discussions with the various prompts. So what are some of Milford's greatest assets? You see those, where these show up in bold, that's comments that have occurred across multiple participants. So trails and walking trail, the trail that heads up to Hopkinton, the bike trail there, and the parks around Louisa Lake specifically were mentioned quite a bit. And then you see some of the other opportunities around Milford's assets. Those were all put on a map. We also asked participants, as they entered the meeting, to tell us where they live in terms of precinct, and we had, as you see in the pie chart here, a very solid distribution across all precincts. All precincts were represented and had a fair amount of, you know, representatives from each one, which is great to see from geographic distribution. We went through also, as we'll collect in each of our outreach sessions, including this meeting and the survey, some demographics around who's participating, and we'll compare these back to the town demographics to see where we need to focus outreach in the future. We see here some of the amount of years people have lived in Milford, which is also a good range, mostly centering on longer-term residents, either 21 to 40 or 41-plus years. And then age also skewing a little bit older, and this points to maybe a targeted outreach, which we've already begun with the youth commission, on maybe trying to figure out ways to reach the younger cohort. Relatively balanced in terms of gender, but more women than men in the room, and a predominantly white audience, which is another thing that we will have noted and will continue to work on in terms of getting a more diverse representation included in our meetings and sessions. And also skewing a little bit toward the higher-income side of the population as well. We'll have to also think about ways to get the lower-income portions of the population involved in this process as we move forward. Just looking at some of the small group discussions, you see here overview of challenges, what's important for Milford to address over this next 10 years. You see, again, the bold items are ones that showed up quite a bit in the comments. So traffic and congestion, we've already heard that in our discussions as a group and in the municipal interviews that we've done as well. Downtown, again, very important in our discussions already, and that shows up in the community discussions. Parks and activity, recreational space, more green space, the need for housing and multifamily housing specifically, walking and biking connections, improved communication from and with the town, and then lots of comments around cultural inclusion, inclusivity as a community, and improving that aspect of the town. And then we went topic by topic, and these are the ones I'll just, I'll skip through for you to look at in the future. But we did look at economic development, gather comments on downtown, both in terms of what are some of the areas the town could improve upon, and what are some of the areas that the town should focus on the next three to five years to help us think about some priorities, land use, housing, transportation, which I'll pause on here since we are focusing on transportation this evening. But some good comments about increasing the access points to the existing bike trail, so there might not be as many places to get onto it, increasing public transit, rail, trolley, bus shuttle, a variety of ways that transit could be improved, a fair amount of comments around more details about traffic or ways to get people out of cars, and then a focus in the next three to five years on improving that traffic flow, including the traffic flow in local neighborhoods and traffic safety as well. Did the same for community facilities and services, natural environment and open space, and cultural and historic resources as well. And there's a lot of rich information there. The idea is that we will be combining this information with the feedback we gathered from the municipal interviews, from the feedback we are currently gathering from the community survey. We'll put all that together and be looking for patterns and themes that will emerge, which will really direct and frame both the vision statement and the goals for each of the topics. We did also have small group exercises focused explicitly on a vision, both where Milford is today and where it might want to be different in the future. These were some of the recurring themes from where Milford is today, that it's a changing or transitioning community, there's diversity, that the schools are strained and overpopulated, it's a great hospital, it's a hub to surrounding, a hub to surrounding communities, and has a sort of center point between other destinations. It's, has everything you need, it's very convenient as a community, and historically rich and strong community and a lot of community pride. Those were, those showed up again and again. And then what would you like to see, how would you like to describe Milford in the future? And this is, downtown is more of a destination, that the community in general is more inclusive, welcoming, and welcoming to diversity specifically, even more good restaurants, there's some good restaurants today, and I'd like to see even more of that, safe and affordable for all people, more sidewalks and smooth roads, and think about the property tax. A very practical, very practical vision, but important nonetheless. And then what does Milford need in order to achieve that future? Funding, of course, showed up a lot in the comments, increased communication and civic engagement, more opportunities for community involvement, more accessible public meetings, and parking downtown was another topic of discussion, so more municipal parking in the downtown area. And then we have some additional information about how would people, places, or processes change in order to facilitate that type of change in the community. This was also interesting, we had a spectrum arrayed on the, for members to vote or run at their tables, between sort of how close is Milford to your ideal vision today, either not close, or could be better, or ideal. And most of those showed up in the middle of that spectrum, could be better. And that could be better, the specifics about what could be better are what I just covered in a lot of ways. But some people think that Milford is just fine, ideal, as in its current state, and there are a few others on the other end of the spectrum that think it's, needs a little deeper transformation. They also asked what kind of changes will get Milford to the vision, whether they be small, minor changes, steady, incremental, or major transformative. And again, most responses were in the middle of that. So steady, incremental changes, which I think point to, you know, this is the type of changes that a comprehensive plan can help, help the town get organized for. So at the end of the meeting, we also asked some questions about how to improve and increase and maintain involvement in the process. So how would people most prefer to engage? Most people did prefer in-person events and meetings, which is maybe partly a little biased, because that was at an in-person event and meeting, so those are the types of people who would like to show up there. We also had a few votes for virtual events or meetings, so we can think about perhaps integrating a Zoom session or something like that along the way as we continue. The project website also, we will continue to keep updated as we move along, and that's another way people will engage. Weekday evening times would most help people attend, which is when we hosted this on a Monday evening, and so we'll keep considering that moving forward. And the top sources of information were neighbors and word of mouth, a lot of people hearing about this meeting and other town information from their conversations in town. Also, the local newspaper and senior center postings were mentioned as high responses in that other category. The Milford Community Facebook page and/or other Facebook pages are also sources of information, specifically about the meeting that people were attending, they either saw a flyer or saw a Facebook post, or heard it on the radio, a spot about it on the radio, or an article in the newspaper.
Newspaper.
Yeah, I think they had, they had an article. I think there was an article in, was it like Wicked Local or something? Which one?
Milford Free Press.
Milford Free Press. So that, there's a lot more there, but did want to just give you a brief overview of what we saw in the community meeting, what will be sort of initial returns on the type of feedback that we're getting, and then, again, we'll be adding that in with the additional feedback that we'll be receiving, in part through the community survey, which is open, and it will remain open. We don't have an exact date, we'll kind of let the date run if we're still getting traction on it, and just see, you know, try to get as many people to take it as possible. The survey link was released at the town meeting, or at the community meeting, also at the town meeting, actually, in the report that was issued. And we're looking at ways now, and would be happy to either have your help or suggestions about channels to be pushing out information about the survey, so that we can get as many people as possible. I think, I checked this afternoon, we only have 15 responses so far, which we need to, we need to get much higher than that. So we'll be doing that work over the next few weeks to make sure that everyone is aware of it. It is, I would say that the survey itself is complementary to the feedback that we gathered at the community meeting, it's not exactly duplicative. So people that attended the meeting will be sending out a follow-up email with survey information, and they're welcome and invited to take that as well. So here's the link, for those of you who are watching this recording on Milford TV, you can either go to that link or go to that QR code, and that will take you straight to the survey, which we're mentioning. I'll also note that the survey is translated in both Spanish, and so there's a Spanish, all the links go to the same survey, and there's a dropdown for Spanish from English at the top of that survey, which you can change the language in the entire survey. And also in Portuguese as well, you can do the same thing. So there are three languages available. We're going to push the survey out to, with translated versions of this sort of ask to, through appropriate channels, to try to connect each of these portions of the community.
Brazilian Portuguese.
Brazilian Portuguese, correct. And the survey, we think should probably take in the neighborhood of about 15 minutes to take, so a little bit time-consuming as surveys go, but we think there's a lot of really good information in the survey that participants can contribute. It, again, focuses on challenges and opportunities in one section. The first section gives a little context in the introduction about what the comprehensive plan process is for those who are seeing this for the first time. Also talks about the vision again with some questions about that. And then we asked the same questions that you just saw, repeated from the community meeting, for how to stay involved and who the people are that are taking the survey, a little few demographic questions. So we'd be happy to take any specific suggestions, if you have any, about like, definitely send it to this group or this person, or put it out through this channel, or you're welcome to email those to us, or send thoughts through Larry as well, but if you haven't, I would take some notes on it.
Babe, excuse me. This is probably a stunningly stupid question, but I assume you can link to it through the town's website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think we can do that.
It's, it will. It's being updated. The town's website's being updated. That's why a lot of these don't work.
Okay, that's kind of a problem.
I think, what, to the end of this month?
Yes.
Supposedly?
Yes.
Okay, because, I mean, the QR code thing, I don't know, personally, I am not skilled at accessing things that way. So those of us that are not as tech savvy.
To click on a link.
We really need something like the website. I would not know how to link to it through that QR thing.
We need that.
I don't think I'm alone in that. It doesn't help me at all.
I believe in a previous, in a previous meeting, we talked about possibly sending it out as a 3-1-1 message or something like that. Is that possible still?
Like a reverse?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we did discuss that. That could be possible, yes.
I'm not skilled.
Who would we coordinate with to get information if we want to do something?
I guess it would be me, yeah.
Can you leave that there for just a minute?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm almost done, but.
It's in the.
It's in the package.
It's in the package.
Oh. I just wanted to practice.
We also, we'll get, hey, we have the translated versions in copies that are able to be printed as well, so we will maybe send along the printable versions, which can be made available here at Town Hall, or potentially at the senior center, or other, like, we could send it to the senior center director. Because I know that there is a fair amount of population that won't want to deal with it online at all, so we should have paper copies available as well. And maybe we'll, we'll put a note on those paper copies to maybe have them be returned to Town Hall, just because that's the easiest way to do that.
Well, the locations you're talking about, you may want to just talk to them, ask them to put a box there, and just have them drop it in the box that's there. I mean, I, that's a big, that's a big issue at the senior center or here at Town Hall, if it's okay with you, at the library. I mean, so I think if there's a box immediately adjacent to it, you might get it back that way, as opposed to someone having to go to a different location and bring it back.
Great idea, yep. I think what we'll do, since we've connected with many of those department heads already, we'll just circle back with them and ask if we can have them help us with that.
to put a box there and just have them drop it in the box that's there. I mean, I, that's a big, that's a big issue at the Senior Center or here at Town Hall. If it's okay with you at the library. I mean, so I think if there's a box immediately adjacent to it, you might get it back that way, as opposed to someone having to go to a different location and bring it back.
Great idea, yep. I think what we'll do, since we've connected with many of those department heads already, we'll just circle back with them and ask if we can have them help us with that. Any other thoughts about the survey?
I can't think of anything that's going on within the next few weeks that, you know, you should definitely be there type thing.
No, it's a little quiet right now after the town meeting, yeah.
Great. Well, with that, we'll pass it on to Adi to guide us through a little bit of background on transportation, some of the data that we've been gathering and sort of patterns and trends we're seeing, but then we have a few conversation prompts just to hear from the committee about transportation.
All right. Thanks, Josh, and thanks again to all the members of the committee for having me here. Great to be back in Milford a week after we did the community meeting. As Josh said, I'm going to run through a pretty quick transportation overview. I know you'll have this in your packet, but definitely at the end, feel free to ask questions. We can always revisit some of these slides and, you know, and look forward to the discussion as well. All right. So this, just to start, to give you a little bit of context, is kind of showing the existing transportation network within the town of Milford. You can see that sort of tan kind of brown color shows the roads that have sidewalks, so certainly in the downtown and some of the economic centers around town, you have a pretty good sidewalk network, but once you get out of those areas, you start to lack those pedestrian connections in kind of dark blue in a couple of areas. We'll have a couple of other maps that might show this in a little bit more clarity. You can see a couple of the MWRTA bus routes, Route 6 and Route 14, that service the town. And then you can also see kind of a couple of the dark lines, the Upper Charles Trail, and I think there's one, a couple bike lanes around town as well, but not a ton of bike connections necessarily beyond the Upper Charles Trail. But this gives you a sense of the existing transportation network in town, and to say nothing, of course, of the many roadways and highways that you have in town as well, with 495 kind of traversing that eastern edge, Route 16, running east-west, and then into downtown, and then past the medical center on the west side of town. So this is just a summary upfront. Most folks drive alone for their commute, some, just over 70%. Only 2.7% walk, bike, or use public transit. We've heard that traffic congestion and downtown parking management are major challenges, even going back to the last time the town did a comprehensive plan, back in 2003. So definitely hoping when we get to the discussion, we can hear some more specifics about that. As mentioned earlier, downtown is compact and walkable, and the Upper Charles is a great asset for the community, but beyond these areas, you don't necessarily have that multimodal bike and pedestrian connectivity. The crosswalks, the sidewalks might be lacking, the condition might be a bit worse. And then we've also noted recently, I believe on April 8th, that night service was added on those MWRTA buses, which is interesting in that it does indicate that even though people aren't necessarily commuting for their jobs via public transit, there is some level of demand for those services. Overall, that service and access and usage is a bit low, but one thing we do want to try and understand as part of this process is who's taking that transit service and for what kinds of trips. I think we might get some great insights out of that. Another map, just kind of showing you where some of the traffic safety issues in town might be. The brown area is kind of showing collision and crash concentrations, and the sort of black arrows showing cyclist crashes, the red pedestrian crashes, so definitely some safety issues that we can consider addressing as part of this plan. What we see as opportunities, again, you know, the downtown, especially with its compact, walkable nature, the town is participating in the Complete Streets program, which is about looking into opportunities for making streets that work for all roadway users, regardless of whether you're walking, you're biking, you're taking transit, or driving, and no matter your age or ability. So it's really about creating streets that work for everyone, so it's great that Milford is participating in the program. The Upper Charles Trail is again indicative of that, and again, the public transit service in town and the addition of night service. So these are just some of the opportunities that we see in town. And the challenges, kind of the flip side of some of this, the high levels of car dependence and traffic congestion, again, as reflected by the high number of folks who drive for their commutes, the bus service having relatively low frequency, the lack of connections to the regional rail or the commuter rail, I think as it stands, you have to go to Franklin or to Framingham, low public transit usage and the land uses that support that, and again, the lack of bike pedestrian connectivity, and of course, we've heard about the downtown parking management as well. Again, this is just doing a deeper dive on that census data breakdown of how folks are commuting in Milford, so you've seen this already, but this is just to kind of break it down a bit more. And then this is an interesting piece here, that the vast majority of Milford residents commute out of Milford for work, and you also have almost 15,000 people commuting into Milford for work. So the commuter inflow-outflow is pretty interesting. You only have about 2,500 people who both live and work in Milford. And you can see that line on the bottom, we looked at the town GIS website, which shows only 7,000 people commuting into Milford, whereas the most, more recent data shows closer to 15,000. So just in about the past decade, you've seen almost a doubling in how many people are commuting into Milford for their work. So you can only imagine how that's contributing to some of the traffic and congestion challenges you might be seeing in town.
Do we, do we have a survey of how many people trans, through Milford? That's, that's the major.
Well, some prior traffic studies that address that, there's a real high percentage of traffic downtown is through traffic.
Yeah. Oxford, Oxford, Menon, Hope Taylor, further off west, they're all coming through, through Milford to do it. That's the major, it's one of the major things of the morning, the traffic.
And as I mentioned to Josh before the meeting, I noticed that the two different numbers are, you know, almost doubled if you look at the 495 partnerships numbers, but the older numbers, in reference to town GIS, all our town GIS is showing is a 20, what did I say, was 2012?
Yeah, 2012.
American survey data from the census bureau. So it's dated, number one, and it's not done by traffic guys, so it's a little question about, if you look at two, and they're not necessarily doing it the same methodology in the first place. So I think the reliable number that you have there is from the 495 partnership, but I'm not sure what date that's from. That's probably much more recent. I would imagine just less than five years ago.
Yeah, that might be 2022, but we can confirm that.
Yeah, so much, much newer and more reliable to begin with, so that'd be the number to look at.
That's not an exact apples-to-apples comparison within terms of data source and timeframe, but indicative of more people commuting into town. Complete Streets, we mentioned earlier, it's great that the town is participating in the program, but from conversations with the highway engineer, we understand that there are some, of course, funding challenges in participating in that program, and, you know, the town does want to expand the sidewalk network, but also often is constrained in its ability to do so. Again, the Upper Charles Trail seen as a community asset, and looking to the December 2023 Implementation Stats Report from the Comp Plan done just over 20 years ago now, did not indicate much progress in terms of expanding the network to address deficient modes and implementation plans for multimodal objectives. So we definitely see this as an opportunity to dig in on more as we move through this comprehensive plan process.
How important, I mean, I get, I get, as you get towards the city, that there's more of the intermodal, but out here, like, I don't see anybody in any of the bike lanes that we do have. At what point does that not as important to us, I guess?
Well, to tell you the God's honest truth, I think the reason why you see from 2003 Comp Plans now, nothing has been done, gives you an idea of where the town thinks in terms of the importance of that, to be totally honest. I mean, it becomes a very difficult thing with limited space to be putting in bike lanes and sidewalks and stuff. It's not an easy job, and it's expensive if you're truly going to do it, and what's the, how much do you get back? I know there are certain people in town that want bike lanes everywhere, you know, and I've gone through and tried and put bike lanes on Mass Ave and Cambridge, 20 something years, 30 years ago now, I don't think you say it, but I mean, that was a pain there and here, where there were so many people that wanted to use it.
Right. I guess that.
Yeah. And it's something that's been addressed as we go through it, is, there is, there is a call for it, it's part of the process.
How big is that call?
Yeah.
Is, I guess my question.
It's the impact on merchants and everything and the people, because it takes away the parking.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know that we could do it downtown.
No, I mean, they took away the parking from Water Street all the way there, and.
Well, we did, when we did, when we redid the signals on downtown, we lost, you know, you don't think it's much, but you lost eight, 10 parking spaces along downtown to get the signals in and all to get the.
We don't have.
The walk signals.
Yeah, we don't have the wide roads to.
But I mean, you know, obviously, it comes down to, you know, I think part of this is something that you'll have to look at, is to how much is there a call for? I'm sure there is a call, but how, how big is that call, and what is the, what is the benefit at the end of the day, and what is the cost to get there as part of it? You know, as to whether it makes sense or not.
Yeah, and I think the majority of the users of the Upper Charles Trail are recreational users. They're not biking to work. Now, that's not to say that there aren't people that do that, but that's not the primary use, and we definitely don't want to be a transit community.
I seen it in Springfield. I worked, I worked at the State Office Building in Springfield, a five-story building with everything. I think there was three people that biked, all the people who worked there. It's, and then again, in the winter time, there's nobody that might.
I think there is a little bit of a chicken and egg problem in terms of user, like, rates as well. If you don't have a comprehensive, safe bike network, it's difficult to get the bikers to do it, and, but then the investment that's required, then you kind of have to do it on a hope that the ridership will occur from the bikes and.
I drive all over town with my scooter, I have no problem.
We can't even get sidewalks.
But, yeah, I, I, if we had, if I could, if I could see it as a, as a mechanism for people to get to work, I would be more inclined to believe it's something that would make sense. With it, to me, I think most of those people are doing it as a recreational thing, and I see people in, get their bike, put it on the car, and go down to the, go down to the bike trail, and ride their bike down there, and that works, and why would I spend, I hate to say it, but it's easily millions of dollars to try to connect a bike network into that to get them so that they could ride from their house down to the trail so that they could recreationally ride. That, you know, to me, that's where, and again, if we were near public transportation where you could, you could take a bike on a 10-minute ride, leave it there, get on the, get on the train or whatever the form is, and go into Boston or whatever, it would make more sense to me to spend that kind of money. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not precluding you, but I think those are the hurdles that it would have to overcome.
Just two points. I think it's about being strategic, about making those connections, and then also considering user groups. So youth can't, you know, they don't drive automobiles, but they still want to be able to get around. And so having infrastructure in place that allows them to, to move, as well as elders, I think is important. And I think when you're making like things like sidewalk improvements, those improvements like bike lanes can go in side by side, like, we're doing this work for the sidewalk improvements anyway, so why not include bike lanes where it makes sense?
And I will also say, even just on our drive-in here, we were coming in on Route 109 just off of 495, and there were kids biking on the sidewalk, biking in the parking lots of some of the fast food restaurants over there. So, you know, just even anecdotally, if kids are biking around town, you know, are there ways we can make it safer for them? Well, understood the constraints here, but we appreciate the feedback. These are exactly the kinds of things we want to hear, so we can address them as part of the plan. Anything else on sort of the Complete Streets piece before we continue? I just have a couple more slides here, and then we can, of course, continue the conversation. All right, speaking of the Upper Charles Trail, you can see here on this map, in the dark green, you have the spur on the left that goes north to Hopkinton, and then the one on the right that goes east to Holliston, both converging near the downtown. I think both, as far as this broader trail network goes, you have the biggest proportion of it in Milford as things stand right now, about just over six and a half miles of trail right now. And then, of course, this is part of a broader regional trail network that will connect six towns, 26 miles in total when fully built out. So as more of that network gets built out, it might be interesting to think about, you know, would, could people use this to commute to places like Framingham, or for people to commute into Milford for their jobs? So maybe that's not who's using it right now, but could that change over time? Yep, let's see. Again, thinking about public transit in Milford, the routes 6 and 14, Route 6 going all the way from.
16, not 6.
6, sorry.
It's a bus.
No, it's a bus.
Bus, not the Route 6.
Oh, bus, oh. Yeah, not Route 6. I don't know about buses.
It's bus 6.
Bus 6. Bus 6, that's helpful as technology goes. Yep, via Holliston to connections to the Framingham commuter rail. Bus 14 servicing downtown Milford and a lot of other local destinations via a loop. As mentioned earlier, night service being added on those routes, so it will be interesting to kind of understand the user profile and the ridership numbers in a bit more detail. Maybe people aren't taking the MWRTA to get to their jobs, but maybe they're going to medical appointments at the hospital, maybe they're going to the shopping center, you know, definitely eager to get any insights you might have there. And again, coming back to this December 2023 Implementation Report, referring back to the 2003 Comp Plan, it did note that there was progress on considering a commuter rail expansion, so I'm definitely interested to hear more about what that progress has actually been in a bit more detail, if that is something that folks have been talking about.
You can just hang that up as a no. I don't have much push and I don't.
First of all, no matter where the rail is now, and if they come in, if we had a train, when the train comes in, it's going to go onto three side streets. The people are going to get off the train, and it's going to just cause 10 times as much traffic backup. There's, the only way if they, where the trail is now, if they went to Framingham, then they had the area that they could, they could have done a thing, but that trail is gone, that, that rail's gone. So to come from Franklin and to drop off at Depot Street and something, you're going nowhere.
And that's actually, you should be drafting up the state law now.
Yeah, the state actually has it, but I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe the T will ever be looking to do that. I mean, there's significant costs in doing that. I mean, if they're, they're single-track in Franklin now, and that's too long, too long a one-way to, it'll screw up getting in and out of, out of the city, so they'd have to double-track that whole section to make it work, and you're talking big bucks. And right now, I don't think the T's looking to try to spend that much money.
So, all right, well, I understood if that's off the table.
Well, the town, I don't think wants to be a transit community.
Yeah, I think that's.
Thanks to the state's idea of zoning and housing, they can keep it.
But what, is it something that had been discussed before?
Yeah, back, back in that timeframe, there was, there was a push to look at it at least.
Yeah, they did, they did a survey, and the T said that it wasn't, it wasn't worthwhile.
They said there wasn't any ridership. I wonder why? There's no connection.
When you say transit town, do you mean like MBTA?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the state's statute law that requires you to have multifamily zoning, whether it makes sense or not, so we're not interested.
Which you're not impacted by currently.
No, no, we're not.
Correct.
We're, we're.
So the question was, should you be?
One town away.
All right, that, that's helpful. Thank you for that. So this, again, is just showing in a bit more detail where Bus 6 and Bus 14 go. Bus 14, as mentioned earlier, connecting through Holliston up to downtown Framingham, and Bus 14 doing the downtown loop amongst a bunch of destinations, including the high school and the medical center, as mentioned earlier, up to Milford Crossing on the other side, closer to 495.
How many years did it take to get that? 25, 40 at least?
To get the bus service?
Yeah, and, and the rationale there was, well, there's no ridership. Well, no kidding, there's no bus, there's, there's no way to, you know, so they finally agreed to try it, and once they did, especially Bus 14, say, oh, look at that. So now they expanded their route a couple times since it started, yeah.
Is that, is that mostly, what is, what is the range of people that use that to me? Does anybody know?
I, I come out when the high school was getting out to there, it was run by the high school, and there was a.
A ton of kids.
There's a ton of them.
About the age group.
I think it's, it's from young to old. I think that.
Everything?
Yeah.
I didn't know if there was a lot of.
I could see it at Town Hall, because I'm out my window, I can see, and it's.
I could see it at town hall because I'm up my window, I can see it, and it's.
They have data available, so we can just.
Have you talked with Brian Long? He's the chair of the Public Transportation Advisory Committee. He might be your guy. I don't know if you've talked with him yet, if he was on our list.
I personally haven't, but would love to make that connection.
He's probably someone you should talk to because he's in close contact with the with that, and he has all the data, all the ridership numbers, and the reasons they expanded, et cetera. So if you reach out to me, I can get you his contact.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
I think that might help.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's great.
The people that are using us are probably a good source of people to try and talk to. It's a nice idea. Good idea.
All right, the traffic and parking, which we know are hot button issues and have been for a long time, highlighted as the most significant transportation issue in the 2003 comp plan, traffic congestion. We know that the highway engineer is looking at a number of different roadway projects to address traffic bottlenecks, and definitely appreciate any insights you can provide on those. Downtown parking, again, pop, sorry?
I said it, we could, but I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Downtown parking, again, highlighted as a real or perceived problem, going back to the 2003 comp plan and remains a challenge. The undersupply of parking at the senior center has also created challenges for folks, perceived as a problem and a potential safety hazard. I understand the parking lot gets filled up and seniors sometimes have to park on street, but there might not be the best crossings or pedestrian infrastructure for them to get to the senior center if they're parking a little farther away. And then thinking about how some of the high off-street parking requirements in town might be contributing to that car dependence and things being spread further apart. Two spaces per unit is a residential requirement, and we also understand that their requirements are on the higher side for office and commercial, but that you might have some opportunities for shared parking if, say.
I don't think that that's necessarily true.
The shared parking?
No, the shared parking is is an allowed use that we've had now where we didn't have it before. And we've also changed our, we've updated our parking requirements since since the 2003 plan to down the requirement of parking and stuff. So I don't, I don't think we're in a high required anymore. I mean, we may be slightly above, but we're certainly not in a, we've tried to get away, we've certainly tried to way, tried to get away from the asphalt jungle look. To the point of we've probably overstepped in certain areas, to be honest, where we may not even be requiring enough parking, but that's a story for a different day.
But then that two spaces per unit is still, is that still the current minimum?
Yes.
Okay.
Downcom.
But yeah, I don't I don't know that that affects any, I mean, I don't know that that has a high, it certainly doesn't have a high impact on downtown or anything like that. I mean, the two spaces is not.
Yeah, this would be for your off-street residential.
The typical off-street, the typical residential parking, they have more than two cars.
Yeah, exactly.
Per household, they have like four or five, and two or three of those are are vans with ladders on top. So, you know, you got you got parking problems because there isn't enough off-street parking. So saying that the zoning by law might have a ratio that heaven forbid looks bigger than normal somewhere else, it just, it doesn't compute, you know? It's it's not realistic.
Parking downtown, if you want to park in front of the store, maybe it's a little tough, but if you want to walk down four or five spots.
Yeah.
I don't, every time I go downtown, I want to get out. I don't see a problem.
There are over 700 parking spaces off-street downtown. So.
Off-street.
Yeah, off-street parking, 700. And the business people want to park in front of their stores so they don't have to walk. And then they wonder why their customers are complaining that there isn't any place to park that's convenient. Well, Bob, you're on.
Actually, it'd be interesting as you go through this, to be totally honest, in terms of the parking and stuff and what you find, trying to get somebody from outside, only because, I mean, this this poshly came up at town meeting last night. I mean, there was this, there was there was there was talk of, again, you know, and this highlights it again, you said it a couple of times, it needed downtown revitalization. And I drive up and down downtown, and I'm not sure what, I mean, I think I know what it is, and unfortunately, it's something that you in this plan nor us can control, but there's a there's a perceived thing that if you if you have churches in downtown, then then we need to revitalize the downtown because it's not a place to go. And to me, that doesn't, that just doesn't compute. I drive, I lived in Milford when there was an issue with downtown, when we drive up and down downtown with the glass, you know, all the glass fronts with paper up in front of them because none of them had any buildings. That doesn't exist anymore. That's long gone. And and most of the tenants and most of the people that have buildings downtown keep them very well, be they churches or whatever, they're in they're in relatively good shape. And other than the upper floors of buildings, which is, I think we've had this discussion before, other than that, I'm not sure what the revitalization of downtown is. And I don't see it, I mean, yeah, there's some talk of some restaurants and stuff, but I don't see it as ever being what it was in the 1960s. That just isn't going to happen. You know, you can say that in a plan as much as you want, you're not going to get the people that live in Milford that want to be in Milford looking to, you know, looking to be in Vermont in, you know, in a 5,000-person community, that everybody goes downtown to do stuff. But it just isn't going to happen. So it'll be interesting to see what you come out of with in terms of the parking and in terms of stuff, because I know there's that there's that overriding thing. People keep coming to us and saying that and stuff. And when we look at it and try to actually look at the numbers and what what we see, they don't compute. They just don't match.
It's a it's a cycle. Downtown was vibrant. Malls came and killed downtown. Amazon came and killed the malls. It's it's just a cycle of which which way it goes. And that's one of the problems with the downtown in Milford. We had stores there, but the people didn't shop in them, so they closed up. And again, when Martha was town planner, that's when they were they were empty, they were, everything was empty.
Yeah.
And it was it was bad.
It's wonderful now.
And it's fantastic. It looks, they keep them up very nice. They look, they look good. And and the people who own the own the buildings are getting their rent, so.
I think we all do long for, do we even say the nostalgic days where people would go downtown and meet up with their neighbors and friends, which is kind of what we were trying to return to when I was town planner here. But, you know, with so many other shopping alternatives, and I hadn't even thought of Amazon as, you know, but obviously, that's a huge impact on downtown areas.
It's impact on the malls.
Yeah, there's too many choices. So regrettably, I agree. I don't think it, you know, downtown Milford would never again be what it was in its heyday, you know, when there were multiples clothing stores, and there was even a supermarket downtown before I moved here, as I understand it. I'm sorry? The stoppage. I can't imagine that now. You know, sadly, you know, we'll probably never see that again. But it it certainly is better than when it was really bad.
One of the problems is, and it's again, it goes always goes back to the money, is you go to a mall, the snowplow that's clean, it's there, you walk out, you walk in the store. Milford, Milford, when it's heyday, two days after the snowstorm, you didn't know it's, in downtown Milford, you didn't know it snowed. It was, all the snow was picked up, gone. Now, because of the the money, they don't pick it up as often. You sit there, you pull up to the pocket space, you try to open the door, you can't open the door. And then you try to get onto the sidewalk from the driver's side, and you're climbing over the snowbanks, where you, again, you drive up to the mall, you get out, and you do it. So it's, so a bunch of small things, but it always goes back to money.
Also, really, really appreciate this discussion and giving us lots of good things to think about as we move forward here. So I don't know how much more time we have left, but just a few questions for us to consider. I think you've already given us lots of good stuff to work with in terms of, you know, what strikes you about the information, what should we continue to focus on, and what we want to think about as part of a long-term vision for transportation in Milford. And then this next round of questions just gets into some of the more specifics I hit upon, thinking about, you know, the parking and traffic challenges, what the town might be doing to address that, same thing for multimodal connectivity, and also wanting to understand the public transit user base. So, you know, I think we'll definitely follow up with that contact as well. But anything else that folks didn't get to during the course of the presentation, whatever time we have left, would love to open it up for further conversation. Just thanks again for the time.
One of the things, and I don't I don't believe it's in it's in the past going forward, but I forget where it was in 2003. There was one point in time when the town was considering a downtown bypass. So I don't, I don't know whether you run across that or anything that you should look at. Effectively, that was taking traffic from 109 to Veterans Memorial Drive and following the bike path down effectively to Beach Street. It would then cut across Beach Street. Plan would be to cut across Beach Street. And in its best version, there would be additional takings and would have come out at Depot Street. So the people could then go down Depot Street and cut back across to, they would be able to get up to 140. That that is sort of gone by the wayside. I don't think that that ever is going to happen. What you see at Veterans Memorial Drive is actually the start of what was supposed to be the downtown bypass. That's where that got laid out, too, and it just dead ends now with Genesis. But certainly, within the context that the town has now, I think the transportation, certainly during certain times of the day, there is significant amount of traffic in the, I think the worst one is is the Route 16, 109, 85 core area. And that's the area that, to me, you know, 140, especially with the new lights at the hospital, I very rarely is there traffic backups there, but there will be along the downtown core. And again, it's not, I think, going back to what Babe said, I don't necessarily believe it's because of people trying to get to someplace downtown but using that as a mechanism to get through. So it would be nice to come out of it with a with a plan that would would address trying to improve that traffic flow through whatever the the projects are. And what would be, you know, it would be great to have it such that this would be the best one bang for buck. Do this one first, do this one second. Here are the three that would improve traffic. I don't know that we're going to get, you know, to a level of service B on that section, no matter what the hell we do, but at least we improve the flow along there. I mean, I know, I know for a fact that the 85, 16, I think we we talked about this on the bike tour, on the bus tour, that that is, if you eliminate that level of service there and improve that one, the level of service for the through ride will will increase considerably because that one backs up and causes every other light in town to to have a problem. What the what the solution is, I mean, there could be many of them, but that would be one that it would be great to have an idea as to what we could do or not do. We've looked at some stuff. We've, we've, we had a site plan that just came in that we we asked them to push their plantings back such that if the town decided or the state, depending on who improved the intersection, they would, they wouldn't have to take out any infrastructure in order to, in order to be able to do that taking and create an additional turn lane and things like that. So we've, we've done that, but that's, that area, to me, is really what, over the next 20 years, I'd like to see the town address. Because like I said, I don't think, I don't think the bypass is in the cards. I don't think we're going to do it in the next 20 years. And I don't think it's worth spending the time on that. But what can we do to to increase the the transportation throughput on the downtown core?
Although I think there's still a component of the alternate route, that central link of extending Depot Street up to the light at the church that can be done without affecting anything else, other than those storage.
Yeah, storage.
Some of those living for the storage units. There's probably more through one person living in the origins. But that's part of the old rail corridor that would, one of the traffic reports that was connected with the alternate route surveys that are studies that I had put in Dropbox, looked at that, and just doing the Depot Street extension, I think shifted up to 5,000 trips a day off of Main Street. So, you know, that would be worth doing. But again, the majority of the traffic on Main Street on Route 16 has to go there. It's not like they want to drive through down Milford. You know, it's not like, oh, gee, hell, that's spending 45 minutes going five miles. They don't have any other way to go. So I think of the remnants of the original alternate route project or scheme, doing that Depot Street extension for what would be like a block and a half, two blocks, would alleviate traffic dramatically on Main Street, and it would also get rid of the short traffic on Hayward, because you would be able to block all that off. You wouldn't even need to go there. So.
The two, the two parts of, the two parts of town are kind of disconnected in units. And like, you know, we all know how to get from A to B.
Main Street. East Street, yeah.
Depends, it depends on some. Yeah. But I, so I definitely think that that's a good one. I definitely agree with Joe that the 85, 109, 16 area is by far the worst area and the place in the need of the most improvement. I also think Dilla Street is still, you know, I don't know how much there, I guess it's kind of like how much better we can make it, but that's, that's definitely, you know, something that I think should be considered.
Dilla Street, we had, they had the possible bypass road, and the police chief come up at town meeting and shut it down. The town engineer said it was a good deal, and the police chief shut it down. And they, now they built a house there so you can't. But that would have taken some of the, some of the traffic off of Dilla Street and brought it up to the the far end of Pritchett Street and would eliminate a lot of the traffic.
Is that the Quinsham, are you talking about Quinsham Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's called, it's a share.
That wouldn't have made it.
It's the, it's the left turn at the end of Dilla Street that's the killer. Because most of them are trying to get, they're actually trying to get to the, effectively, that affects Mountain Street, which is where they're all trying to go.
That's, that's the big.
Yeah, because the right turn is usually, usually right turn lane is not even full.
When I, when I lived on Sunnyside, it was, I didn't mind using Dilla Street because I was in that right way that I never had. Now, I'm.
I mean, if that was a little longer, we'd get a few people.
I'm a mile and a half different, and it makes a world of difference.
I mean, the other, the other thing that would that would help down there to a certain extent, and it's the same thing, it, you talked about Hayward Street as to whether you did the, you know, you did the bypass going the other way, but is is left turn lanes at Hayward and left turn lane going the other way at Summer, so that you get people by that get stopped at those locations? You know, widening, what do we take to widen those out? Would both help traffic flow through. The one at Hayward's a killer because it's such a short distance between where Hayward Street is and 85 is, and people trying to take the left to get onto Hayward Street stops all the traffic from from going through that whole section. It's a.
And you can't widen it because the buildings and the houses are right on the sidewalk. So there's, there's no way.
That was the other.
Well, yeah, how's that working over there, Stop and Shop?
Yeah, I don't know that anybody, nobody, actually, actually, I looked at it, Ben, you could actually take, you could take the old barber shop off of the building right after, and you could, you could leave the house, take the front section where the barber shop was, and actually put in.
Still got the daycare center there.
Yeah, they don't use the front door either. You could actually take the door off. I looked at the whole thing. You could actually do it without actually taking the whole house.
It's bad enough that it's worth, I think that that area is so bad, it's worth looking at some relatively extreme options.
Hopefully you guys got all that. Every street, intersection, everything.
It's being recorded, right?
We're going to check the recording.
Exactly. That was a lot. You could see the look in your face because we just hit five different points of town. So, but. I guess coming back to the to the center here. Thank you for presenting tonight. Appreciate it. Looking, you know, what strikes me about the information, and then quickly, is the amount of traffic. And, you know, and we know that traffic is the big thing. And the amount of traffic that that's either Milford residents leaving the town or or outside residents coming into town to work. And as you just heard, all the different aspects of the challenges or the areas of of traffic congestion. What are the next steps from your side, from traffic, from transportation, and what will this board see from those next steps?
Yeah. So we we do get into some of the details like you're talking about, so we will think about. about specific locations, but we're not going to solve, we're going to solve those problems within the comp plan, but we will basically take all this information, there's, I think, what, the parts of the comp plan that come together in each of these topics are the sort of more qualitative community desires and goals, and then the more quantitative data-driven side of things. So, we're going to try to bring both of those parts together and see where the overlap is between them. And then, through our goals, really attempt to help prioritize where the town is putting these limited resources that can go into transportation, and help, help the town to make those best prioritized decisions about, you know, this intersection, or this place, or this further study.
Now, any type of price tag on that? Do you give any type of estimate of what that would be, and is that part of that list of prioritization?
Yeah, we do, when we get into implementation actions, which is sort of the, the final step of goals, strategies, actions, we do typically think about the implementation costs sort of relative to one another, so not necessarily, like, this is going to be a $5 million project, we're not doing estimates on it, but we are thinking about, like, we usually do it in some sort of symbology, like, this one is a, a $1 sign approach, and then we assign a range to that $1 sign versus this is a $3 sign approach, which is like, you're going to need external funding.
Right. Yeah, because again, as, you know, the talk was around bypass roads and, and traffic flow patterns and things of that sort, so yeah, I just wasn't sure, that level of detail, you know, that we'll get to. And then, how far down the study path do you go from, from solving those problems, or, or just pinpointing those areas, saying that, all right, these are, these are truly the areas of, of need, but you need to go and find a solution?
I think it's pointing to the next steps to the solution for, trying to narrow what you're looking at, but then also saying, if that's the critical intersection for all these reasons, and it's going to have this sort of price tag potentially, the next step is to, you know, have a follow-up study with CTPS, or, you know, work with MassDOT to get on the tip, or whatever the case may be. And so, we'll outline for those priorities what we think should, should be happening in terms of those actions.
I know, tonight was, oh, sorry.
Just to piggyback off that a little bit, I know the 2003 comp plan highlighted a lot of specific traffic congested areas and potential solutions there, so I know we could probably reference some of that as we look back on it. I know, you know, the bypass, I think, was in that 2003 plan, it sounds like that's not going anywhere, but, you know, Depot Street extension, sounds like that has been a solution, you know, something you might consider elsewhere, looking at this Route 16 convergence area. So, we can certainly reference that and think about what the different solutions for those areas might be.
Yeah, the studies all refer to the alternate route. So, there are bypass studies, there are alternate route studies.
Okay.
So, in terms of trying to make connections.
Give me the school buses.
Bypass is just a vernacular slang approach.
You can go on the Amazon buses.
Alternate route. So, all the studies say alternate route.
The traffic is a byproduct of the success of the town and the, and its commercial districts.
Yeah, all the stuff they're complaining that isn't any good.
Yeah, I mean, when they did Fortune Boulevard, and that, it's, it's a, it's a cash cow for the town, but it's, the traffic's a byproduct of it, you're not going to get away from it.
I will say, though, just another value of the comp plan is that we're not just solely looking at transportation isolated, but we're looking at all the other topics.
In a context.
Yeah, and thinking about land use patterns and how future land use patterns might help to keep a car off the road potentially. Thinking about, as Audi was talking about in the presentation, the, the benefits, trying to get a little further down the road in terms of, you know, that's, I'm mixing my multimodal metaphors, but a little further down the road in terms of multimodal, because every, like, one of the things we didn't touch on in the bike conversation, we hear, we hear the difficulties with the, the bike network, but it is, if we can get to, and it might, the data might not show this, but if we get to a point of understanding that a bike is a car off the road, it might not be that case, like, it might not be the case because we're not seeing as much living and employment in Milford in those community numbers, it's more people coming in, so what, a bike off the road might not be a car off the road. But thinking about ways to, long-term, get congestion down, and, and using the, the broad sort of topics of the master plan to try and touch that, or comp plan, excuse me.
Covid, actually, with the working from home, eliminated, eliminated a lot of traffic.
Let's not go through that again, though.
No, 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 but what it did, it, it made it so that there's a lot of, there's a lot of people working from home now, and not, and not.
Yeah, there was no traffic, I could drive down here and sit in Zoom meetings all day, it was great, no traffic.
No staff.
I don't, Beaver Street, the two-way portion, I don't know if anybody has mentioned, I, I just wanted to make sure, because that's moving forward, and certainly falls into the transportation and develop.
Yeah, I forwarded the latest batch of stuff and the possible grant applications and our letters of support, which the letters themselves kind of defined what it was, so at least I've got to have sort of a clue as to what we're up to. Not that we do, but it looks like we do.
One more question, obviously tonight's focus was transportation, there was some discussion regarding the, the downtown area and the, the makeup of it, I'm assuming we'll get to that.
Yes, economic development downtown.
I'll save my questions and comments for then, then.
That's, that's for next meeting in June, which we can actually, yeah, flip to, just to get the date up in front of you. But the, yeah, surveys are good, and, yes, so that, yeah, that's, if you're interested in the every detail of the schedule, that is, that is it. This is a more summarized version of where we are at. The community survey is happening now, we are working with our community engagement team to set up a second meeting with community-based organizations at the end of June, which we're hoping will diversify the participation that we saw in the first community meeting last week. But just for our work together as the ad hoc committee, next meeting will be June 18th at 7:00, the first hour or so of your planning board meeting, and that will, amongst other agenda items, we'll be talking about economic development in downtown, in, in a similar manner, where we'll have a brief presentation with facts and figures, and then have a discussion about it.
Excellent.
Is that the one where we got the public hearing, Larry?
No.
No, we have the first meeting.
That's the fourth.
That's what we did.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all for your time and feedback and input and direction as we're, we're continuing on, and so far, so good.
I, I, I did want to tell you congratulations on the amount of people you had, because I wasn't sure you'd be able to get that many, because I thought that was great.
That was impressive.
I mean, it would be great if you can get a, a more diverse group, obviously, in terms of the, the amount, but, but getting that many people up was, was excellent, too.
A little bit surprising.
Very, very successful first meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
I did send you an email back, and I don't know if they still wanted to do a.
Oh, yes, sorry, I didn't close the loop on that. We did, Javier and I did do an interview with Milford TV last week. I think, for now, I think they're satisfied, but perhaps next time, we'll have you sub in.
It wasn't high on my list, but.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. What's the pleasure of the board?
Actually, I had one, we did, as opposed to a, we, we will have to pick a candidate for planning board to be on the high school building committee, so I, I always thought we may want to do that tonight and get that out of the way. I know I talked to you, babe, but certainly something that I'm very interested in doing, I don't know what the other members.
Yeah, myself.
Being on here for 24 years, and I forget how many schools I haven't been on the building committee, but I certainly would look forward to being on the committee.
The school committee, yeah, we haven't gone through yet with school committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I guess.
I'd like to be on.
Should it be an agenda item first and foremost?
It doesn't.
Okay, just asking for clarity. And this, yeah, and obviously, we got it going last night, town meeting, so we're just, I think, school committee-wise, we're just, we're, we're doing a lot of work in the background, the, the go button doesn't start until August 5th, so, but certainly, we want to get that team in motion, so, I'm just saying that we're, we're working to get everything moving.
Did you say you want to be on?
Well, I do, but Joe is saying.
I just, yeah, I'm just going to caution us to wait a little bit until, until all the other boards get everything in line.
I don't know that I have a vision, I have, my vision is, is to make sure that the building that goes in is, is the best building that we can do for the, for the amount of dollars that we can spend, and make sure that we don't do things like we did on the last one, where I believe we, you know, we had people come back in the year after they did it to, to put in new things, I mean, to me, that's unacceptable. My intent is to, you know, it is, it's most of the stuff that I do, in response to the floor, and in terms of anything that I've ever engineered, is, is to make sure that the quality of what's put into the documents, because I'm certainly not going to be up here every day, what goes into the documents provides the town with the, the best bang for the buck, and in fact, gives them a building that's going to be usable for the next 50 years, and meets the requirements now and is for as far as we can see into the future. I mean, that's my, that's my vision. I can't, I, you know, I can't tell you, hey, we've got to rehab the new building, or put a new, I don't know, that, that comes out of this study.
That's going to be a feasibility study.
That comes out of the study, but I mean, in terms of what I'm looking at, that, that, those are the types of things that I'm looking at, I want to make sure that there's input from, from not only the school committee, but, but, you know, every, every group that's, that's there that's possibly going to use it, be it the cafeteria, be it the, the athletic department, be, be it the police safety, all of those need to be, yeah, to make sure that it's as functional as possible. That's, you know, and I, and I don't know that, that we've done that as well as we should have passed, so that was my main reason for, for wanting to get on the committee. And, you know, I, I think mine, there, there were issues, you know, there, there were other people that were highly involved with the other schools at the time, so I didn't say anything when I was, when, being a member of this. That, I don't, you know, I don't see that as being an issue here, I'm also more available, there was also, for me, there was, at certain points in time, there was actually, there was actually thoughts of me being on, on state building committee, and, and so I didn't want to get in the middle of, if I decided that I wanted to do that, I didn't want to be on a committee here where I couldn't do it, so I never pushed to be on, but I think at this point, it's something that I, that I think that I can, I will be an asset to the town.
Yeah, I swore I'd never want to be on the, the building committee again, when I was on the yellow one, but again, I, the importance of this, what we're doing here is, in one form or the other, I'd like to be on, I'd like to be on the committee.
Yeah, and that's why I'm cautious about doing anything now, I think that you, you will bring a wealth of knowledge to that committee, no doubt about it.
The reason why I think, to me, it's important to do it now, is that if there are people that are interested in doing it outside of this, that there are other positions available, and that if we do that now, then those people can make it known that, be it the selectmen, be it through, be it through the school committee.
Exactly.
They can, but if we wait until everyone else does it, and they've already picked this, then we have one person.
I get where you're coming from.
One slot available.
Correct.
Are you saying we might even have two?
No.
We'd only do one.
No, we only have one.
We only have one.
But as a citizen of Milford, you have your right to put your name into other, other applications.
It's a board of 15 overall, and they're 15, 15 individuals, you know, with select board and school committee having representation from their boards, and also they have appointments from their boards, so, so there's, again.
The design of the committee doesn't specify one member of planning board?
Yes.
It does, yes, it does. Yeah, with that, yeah, so we have, yeah, so as far as school administrators, planning board member, school committee members, select board member, appointed individuals from the select board, appointed individuals from the school committee, and then a, a town meeting member, and then a, like, a, a teacher that is part of the, the union, and that will be a teacher, a representative for the teachers.
The school committee thing is supposed to be somebody in the building, and then the trades.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, and that's how we're going to basically, at school committee-wise, collect resumes, and we want to appoint individuals, like Joe, that have construction background, so they can be, you know, in a sense viable members of that, of that committee.
Yeah, I think the timing, from all the board members' perspective, the, the timing of doing it now would set whoever the planning board rep is, and free up the rest of you to put in your names and, and go for another appointment to get on it as well, but not as a planning board member, as a, as a citizen.
Do you think that, do you think that two, we have a meeting in two weeks, right?
Well, three.
Is it, oh, it's three weeks?
Well, it's June 4th.
I'm not sure with selectmen, I'm not sure.
Two weeks.
They could be, they could be nominated between now and then, which is probably the biggest location of that large membership.
Right. So, it would, time-wise, it benefits the planning board to, to choose a planning board rep, whoever it is, and then that frees up the other four members.
I was just thinking, if we had a little bit of time to, to, to figure out who.
It's only time first, I got no, I got no problem taking my shot the other way.
Your what?
I got no problem trying to get in the other, the other way.
Just as a resident?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
And I nominate Joe Caligione to serve as the planning board's representative to the high school building committee. Is that what we were waiting for?
Yep.
Motion.
I'll second that.
Moved in second to appoint Joe Caligione as the member of the school building committee from the planning board, any discussion? Are you not all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, yeah, Mr. Five.
Obviously, I'll keep you guys informed as to what's going on, I'm likely out to have this, but I can't lie.
Yeah, you won't be alive.
You can start, you know, making a contact.
Got everything?
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second?
Moved in second, any discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, yeah, Mr. Five.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.